And Mary Walsh, Page Five, and with the administration, Karen Fuller, State Secretary, and Mark Terry, Public Works Director. You all by your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we pray for Rain. We pray that you are watching over us as we endure this unending heat. We ask that you watch over the citizens of Somerville County, and those around Palms and Kingdom Lake, and through the other countless wildfires happening here in our state. We ask that you watch over those firefighters and others who are working so hard to put those flames out. We ask that you keep watch over our school district, and the teachers, and staff, and students, as they prepare to go back to school. And we ask, as always, that you watch over our servicemen and women who are fighting overseas. We also ask for you to watch over the Wallen family, as Councilmember Wallen's father has recently passed, and we ask that you help them through this prime time. In your name that we pray, amen.
Amen.
Mary, would you like to leave this in the pledges?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored and protected in Texas, high and every citizen who we need in Texas, one is safe and under God, one and immediate as possible.
Do you have some sign up for public comments? Nita, did you want to speak on public comments?
I do.
All right.
I'm like many that are here tonight. I attended the last city council meeting, and I have some concerns. I want to request that when the concerned citizens are standing, that there are no comments other than from the council, no outburst of anger. That's just not appropriate. And also, I want to follow Robert's rules, and if there's a three-minute time limit, there is a three-minute time limit, uninterrupted by the gallery. And please pray for us, and I'm talking to our mayor, or whoever's giving the invitation, please pray for us, not preach to us, as I took that at the last council meeting, as a hint. Thank you.
Steve Yost? No?
Oh, I'm going to pass.
All right. Then we'll move on to new business. We do have other sign up for agenda items, and I'll call those when we get those agenda items. New business item one, to discuss and take possible action on entering into an interlocal agreement with the Grandview Independent School District for School Resource Officer Services for the 2022-2023 school year. You'll see in your packet, the interlocal agreement, for standard local agreement we've used for past several years. Only change is that the school district has asked for two SRO officers this year. Officer Sanchez has diligently served that position for past several years, and will still be there, mainly at the high school and junior high campuses. And they would ask for one that would be mainly at the elementary, and would help with the co-op campuses. Kirby, is there anything else you'd like to add to that?
Not really. We just think, given the sacred securities of foremarriage of everybody's mind in the school business, and pretty much everybody in Texas after the tragedy in Uvalde, we think it would be best to have an SRO there at the elementary campus. He could also help over at the co-op if needed. Obviously, if it happened at the junior high or the high school, he could be over there quickly, but we do feel that it would be in our best interest to have someone at the elementary as well.
Does the council have any questions on this?
So is it my understanding that you're asking for a second officer to be on campus, and for the city to pay for it?
The school district reimburses the city for it. That's what the, in Section One of it, that dollar amount is double what it was last year, so for two officers. The district reimburses the city for equal payments, in part.
Officer Archer?
Troy.
Since we're discussing this, and you're interim chief of police, I'd like to have your input on this, as far as what's being requested, and any questions that I may not know to ask Kirby at this point. I'd like to know what your position is on this, because it's going to directly affect the workforce.
Yeah, the biggest thing is just the safety, obviously, of the kids and staff that are unprotected. Eventually, I know Johnson County, most schools have their own PD. Eventually, that may be something where, you know, you want to go, but the reason that that is out there is to get that protection now for the kids and the staff. So eventually, they go to their own PD, that's even better for them, but right now, if we can help them, that's better for now.
So I'm hearing you're in agreement for what's being requested?
For now, yes.
For now, okay.
As of right now, yes. Just so we have another officer up there. Obviously, the PD is going to come regardless to help out, but right now, I think if we can get somebody in there, you know, it's just more safety for the schools.
Are we able to do that?
Yep.
And like, what are the hours, like, what are we, is it all the same hours as the officers?
Sanchez works seven thirty to four.
Section four of the interlocal agreement, seven thirty to four, and then any designated...
This officer would be doing the same thing?
Yes.
Exact same thing, yeah. And then they obviously do the hospital football games.
They do football games, they do some basketball games, the new graduation. Anytime there's a large crowd, they'd be there.
Would it help us as a council to put an estimated date to come back and revisit this, to discuss, maybe a workshop or roundtable for its own?
Well, we need to get this approved, so the school district can get it approved.
Okay, well, I want to ask this. So you brought up, you know, at this time, this is a good decision. Kirby's finding this as well, but you also mentioned some of the school districts have their own service.
And the thing is, it's going to take months to get a PD started. You got to go write policy, you know, and all that's got to be reviewed before they'll open up a new agency.
So my question is, if we do this, is that something that you'd be willing to have a conversation with us, and the school board and Kirby?
I can tell you, we would not be starting a school district police department during this calendar, or during this school year. That's not...
Well, I want to discuss it at some point, but he's saying it takes a long time, maybe at the end of next year, or, you know...
Yeah, we would...
And that's with that contract, it's a year-to-year contract. It's only, it's signed every year.
Correct.
Okay, great. I just want to give them all the help they need, and make the bigger picture work.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Do you want to make a motion?
We already have an officer designated for this.
Officer Sanchez will continue over the new one, and Troy will make that determination which officer can set in that position.
That position isn't posted yet. If it gets passed, then I'll post it as soon as it's passed.
I'd like to make a motion to enter into interlocal agreement with Grandview Independent School District for School Resource Officer Services for the 2022-2023 school year. Officer Sanchez?
Second motion. And second, a call for a vote.
Maymore, yes.
Gilchis?
Martin, yes.
Gilchis.
Motion passes. This is new business item two, to discuss and take possible action on appointment of chief of police positions. I put this on here so we can, we can discuss where we want to go with this position. Do we want to look at hiring internally? Do we want to have Troy roll over into permanent chief of police, or do we want to go back to a full search? I mean, we need another direction, so Troy can, there's a lot of choice to get done now, and if he's not getting this long-term, it helps determine the direction of way he goes.
Sure. My opinion is, because I don't know Troy, and I really don't know any of the officers, and I'm not in the police force, so I kind of like, I would like to have a meeting with Troy as a council, as a group, and we can do it next week. And I think hiring internally is always a positive. That's what I would be looking at. But I would like to do an interview process. I haven't, I don't want to just agree to something just because it's...
I'll script the comments. I'm just making another direction, where to go.
That's what I'd like to do.
Any other council members? Any thoughts, and why we're going to have it here?
I think that's a good idea.
Is that something that we need to put on the calendar today, so Troy feels like he's getting some direction?
Troy, is that good enough for you to have instead of just some interviews?
Y'all want it sorted out, and we could do that.
So can I call you next week and let's get a meeting? We can do that, okay, no problem.
I don't feel that's a need for us to take any action on that. I'm going to move items three and four to after we do items five and six, just based off the applications for the boards. Namely, the one individual that did prefer planning and zoning as their number one, lives within the ETJ, and that position on P and Z is already a filled position, and we don't have one ETJ representative on the planning and zoning, so I would like to move out item five and six first, and then we can go off from there.
Okay.
So item five is discuss and take possible action on appointments to type A, E, D, C. We have the different applications in front of you in your packet. We have two positions open on Type A currently, places three and four. We also have two positions on Type B open at this time. We have all the applicants that have submitted thus far, in front of y'all. I mean, that was their preferred choice, I mean, any of them that put it in there.
So would you like to make a motion?
I mean, so, y'all, you...
I'd like to make a motion, if I don't recall this, on number five, to discuss and take possible action on...
We just want to say who you would like to appoint.
I would like to appoint John Wood, Type A.
All right. Got a motion?
Sorry.
We'll give him. All right, got a motion, second, a call for a vote.
Maymore, yes.
Gilchis.
Martin, yes.
Gilchis.
All right, so go up there, then, then open. Well, read my agenda.
We still have one to open on Type A.
Yes, currently. New business item six, to discuss and take possible action on appointments to Type B. As you've seen, there we have others that have also applied that Type B was their preferred choice. We've got Johnny Givens.
I would like to...
Julie Swift, and Ashley West, too, that was always preferred.
I would like to appoint Johnny Givens to Type B.
Just him or any others? We've got two positions open in Type B. Fill out if you want.
We have Julie Swift that wants Type B, we have Johnny Givens that wants Type B, Esther and Ashley West.
Yes.
So I'm going to go with Johnny Givens. I'd like to appoint him.
So do we know how to fill the other four positions?
I don't know. Can I, can I, would I?
Yeah.
I mean, don't we...
Yeah, we're still, the motion needs to have who we're putting in to the board.
I would appoint Julie Swift.
All right, so, I just need someone to make a motion, include both of those names for Type B.
I'm going to make a motion to initiate Johnny Givens, and Julie Swift, and Type B.
All right, got a motion?
Second.
And the second, a call for a vote.
Maymore, yes.
Gilchis.
Martin, yes.
Gilchis.
Motion passes. Then, out of the ones we left, Ashley West is the only one that would be on planning and zoning, so basically, off that. And so she did not, she did not, as long as she does, the board should like. So, as I said, Ms. Fletcher, which lives in ETJ, can't qualify since we already have someone as her ETJ representative currently.
Who is on ETJ?
Kyle Brobaker. At this time. So...
Do we have, are we able to go back to the C's, Dr. Stapp, to Type A as well?
Yes, if you...
So I would like to appoint Fletcher to Type A.
So then, Karen, will we need a re-motion, type that, item five again?
Yes.
So we have both names.
So we're going to go back to item five, and then make a new motion to include...
And then the motion to include Daphne Fletcher and John Wood.
All right, got a motion?
Yes.
All right, call for a vote.
Maymore, yes.
Gilchis.
Martin, yes.
Gilchis.
All right. So then, without any P and Z, we'll strike items three and four from the agenda, which takes us to item seven, to discuss and take possible action on the appointment of an interim city manager. So I told council in Glassmania, I contacted Texas First Group the next day following our meeting. They have sent a resume for Mr. Bill Ship. He's here tonight, if you all have any questions for him. His resume is there. And then Mr. Curtis Jones also sent me an application, and he is here down there as well. So, I mean, right now, I feel that we need someone that can get us through the next couple of months, get us through budget season, just get us through this transition period, someone that's got knowledge, budget with development. I'm sure you all are aware, and I know we have developers with waiting to date a breath, you know, what we're going to do. So do you have any questions for the two gentlemen's resumes that are here?
As I mentioned in the meeting before, I want to, Mark Watson had one of those to be considered. Justin, do you have Mark Watson's resume? I have extra here.
Yeah.
Lori, I don't think you have one. Is Ashley, do you have one?
Any other to become up with Mr. Watson?
Mr. Watson has been a citizen of Grandview for a while. He was right up there if you'd like to ask some questions. And we are just discussing here in room?
Yes, just here for a very time. Mr. Ship, can I just ask you to kind of tell us what your experience is for us?
Thank you, sir. My name is Bill Ship, and I am a retired citizen who was since I retired in 2015 from Bonham. Has had three interim positions, so had a chance to see interim work, and the first time I worked in interim, and Murphy, who came as quite a surprise, really, I expected to do some of them, as the mayor said, just drive the boat and get down the road, which is a big part of it. But as always, there seems to be other things sort of out there. It is budget season now, and that's going to be a key thing, understanding it's going to be short of some staff, that's going to be key, I think, to hire some folks. And as I look around town, as I read your budget, clearly, y'all done a lot of work in the public works area, the street projects, et cetera. And I don't know the status of all those, how many of them, plenty of them are in progress, but those are some of the key things to keep moving along. But to back up just a little bit, I am from the, from the, well, I've lived all over the world, so I'm from the area, that's Garland, by the way. And then I go to T County. I'm from Garland, Texas originally. I hadn't lived there, I live there now, but I was away for about 30 years, spent 20 years in the Air Force, retired from the Air Force at 88, started working as a, in the local government. But I worked for a defensive contractor for a while, started working in the local government back here in Texas in 94, 90, 94, 95, excuse me, 95. Worked for two cities before I had my first city manager job. I've been city manager of Commerce, city manager of Royal City, and lastly, city manager of Bonham. I'm enjoying the work, I'm enjoying my life now, for honestly, I don't want a full-time job, but I mean, I want a full-time, at first, interim job, yes, that's what they mean, I didn't mean a full-time. I don't want something that's going to last me two years, I just don't want that right now, but I really still enjoy the business, think I can do a community a good job, and so the interim jobs have been very, very good for me, and hopefully, if you check with the mayors of the cities, I think it's going to do for them as well.
Any other questions for Adam?
Appreciate you coming down.
Thank you.
And submitting the resume.
Thank you.
And Mr. Jones, would you like to say anything? Mr. Watson, is there anything you'd like to say?
Yes, with regards to... I've lived in this town for many, many years, since 1990, and I've seen this town go from a great town to live in, to a town that's just not the greatest to live in. And it's time for leadership, and it's time to lead these people, and make these people know that this city government right here is behind them 100% and get this city back on track, and get it back ready for the future of this government.
All right. So Mr. Watson, can I ask, do you have, I mean, any municipal experience currently? I mean, I don't see any on your...
My municipal experience has been with Bell Helicopter, with management, and upper management, dealing with...
But nothing directly with city government?
No.
All right.
Mr. Watson, I noticed on the resume that you obviously have kept your job for a long time. I have checked with your employer since you've retired, and they have stated that you were very loyal to them, that you're hardworking, you're teachable, you respect all authority, and if you're willing to come in and do extra when it's, can you hear me?
Go ahead, I can hear you.
Go back up there, maybe ask the city council. I might be talking to someone. Let me ask instead of tell. I have done a little background check on you, calling from your resume that you submitted, or have given me, and I know that you do not have any municipal experience specifically, no more than some others, but what's important to me, I can't speak for them, but what's important to me is loyal, honest, knowing right from wrong, sticking out the hard times, being willing to make the hard decisions when it's far from being the easy decision, caring about your employees, whether you may agree or disagree with them, supporting them, and the biggest one is putting the city first.
Yes.
And do you understand that if you were to have this interim position, that this council as a whole is in charge of the city manager?
Absolutely. Absolutely understand.
Does anybody else have any questions, Mr. Watson?
Do you think if, in this position, since you have been a longtime citizen, you could put your own issues in the past aside to lead this city without emotional interference?
Absolutely.
All right. Can I ask the council or no? Why would not be best for us to have someone that has no past to the city, that does not know our baggage, just someone that could come in, get the job done, get us where we need to be right now? Why we wouldn't want to consider that option? Someone with knowledge, experience in this field? I mean, I don't like you, we're all, well, that's not my question, like you, I want my best for our citizens. I worry that if we bring someone who's lived here, that their own personal issues from the past and what's gone on could interfere with the job. That's why my thought process here was to find someone who does not know us, who has not been here before, has the knowledge that we need, because collectively, we don't have enough knowledge to get us through the next few months. That is why, you know, I contacted Texas First Group, they have the abilities and the knowledge to find someone who can get us through the situation, to get us through this transition period in our lives, until we can begin the full search for a full-time city manager. And, Mr. Watson, I'm sure you have, you're a great person, and you have a lot of experience, but I worry that you don't have the specific knowledge for municipal government right now that we need to get through the budget, through development, through public works issues that are going to arise, because just in the past two weeks, I've had to sit in these shoes, there's going to be a lot that's come up. And so against you, I'm just trying to do what we can do best for our citizens right now, and I feel getting someone like Mr. Ship, as recommended by Texas First Group, who has this vast knowledge on municipal works and governments, can get us where we need to be for the next few months, he's not going to know what's going on, he's not going to feel any ties to what's going on. That's the job of an interim. They come in, they fix us, they get us going until we get to where we need to be, and that's it. And I just, my biggest worry is if we do get someone, because I love finding local people, there's nothing wrong with that, but they have ties that are sometimes too hard to ignore when an issue comes up, and...
That's fair, and I also think that often it happens, and has happened, but regardless of where someone lives, you know, go ahead, tell them, sorry to interrupt.
No, I just, I agree, I think that we need to hire somebody that's in our town, that will respect our town, and have a lot of ties to this town, and will do good for this town. Nothing against Mr. Ship, but we need somebody that's close and local.
With both his learnings.
Because I've seen from the past, if you live outside, you tend to see they don't care about the city, and I've seen it as a resident, and that was after I first moved here, so I think that we need to be looking at somebody...
For staff that's working here, how would, what is y'all's thoughts? You would be the one directly working with whoever is appointed in this position?
Well, Karen's leaving at this time.
I know, but I'm also asking Mark, he's still here.
It's budget season. Y'all are going to want somebody that's knowledgeable about that. I mean, this is, I've worked a little bit in some, in Haco, but not full-fledged like what I'll be doing here, and it's going to be fun.
Is that still work for it?
Yeah. Yeah, I kind of want somebody that probably has some background in that, I mean, that's just my personal opinion.
That is my biggest concern, is getting us, getting us through budget season, and from personal experience, Mark Watson is a great guy.
I'm not married, he's a good guy.
He helped me get through a very, very rough time in my life, and I will always be grateful for that. In this particular case, my biggest concern, though, is we have got a huge mountain to climb in the next two months to get budget where it needs to be. I have a little bit of knowledge about the budget building for a, you know, $5 million a year nursing home, but it's, it's very minor compared to what's, what's coming up for the city, and that is what puts the city on firm footing with its suppliers, vendors, across the board, everybody that helps this city learn, and that is, that is the major reason that I feel like we need to go with somebody that comes in with a clean slate, with no agenda except to get us through this interim period. If we want to revisit, you know, for city manager, when we get, start getting our new full-fledged employee resumes for the final city manager, submit your application, submit your resume again. here, submit your resume here. But this is a, this is a make or break situation here, and I just, I just fear that we don't have enough collective knowledge. I know I don't have it to sit down and do a budget between now, I mean, I realize that the framework is there, but I don't feel like, if, if, if Zach doesn't have.
Zach's there.
If Zach doesn't, and, and I don't, and, I mean, we're, we're ultimately responsible for doing that. So, I would feel much more confident in the short term, having somebody that has no preconceived notions of anything, that's just here to do a short-term job and get us where we need to be two months down the road, without losing any grain.
Budget, I've done budgets for fifteen years, city manager, helped with the budgets. Also, but, we want somebody to set us up now to where the next year, we're set up to succeed in the next year, not somebody expecting to come in here and do this this year, and then we're just training somebody else, get somebody else to figure out what our budget is, and see how we've been operating till last year or two. We don't want to start that over again.
Well, I'm big on resources, we're all there, we've had quite a lot of fun since we've been here, and it's more than just the city manager position, it's, um, there's a lot to clean up and fix, and I already know half of it, but I know I'm, I do multi-million dollar budgets on a daily basis, running companies, including my own, and that does not scare me, however, I'm, I truly believe that when you have good resources, I have had the privilege of meeting with all, all of our surrounding mayors, some other council members, some of the county commissioners, and I've been roundtabling with them to get their information on what's worked for them, what's not worked for them, um, trying to be very objective, and what's been hard, what's been easy, what have they have done differently, and, um, I even took Mr. Watson's resume to him, and although he doesn't have any municipal background, that doesn't mean that he doesn't have the ability to lead and learn, and also do budgeting, um, it doesn't, he, because he's not on his own, this whole council too, he's been there for the mayor, and I feel very confident in my abilities and skills as a collective group, and we use our resources, we can get where we need to go.
Mr. Schiff, do you have something to say?
I just want to respond to something, the question that Will just asked earlier.
It's about, uh, excuse me, about, uh, dedication, because I made the comment that I hope it wasn't misunderstood, I'm not interested in full-time job, if me a, a long-term job, no, but I guarantee you this, you'll get a hundred and ten percent of me the entire time I'm here, whether it's three months, four months, five months, or longer, by frankly, as long as you need me, you'll get it from me. I was, I was, I'm sorry for the night.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Okay.
Since I'm leaving, I have a question, Mr. Aaron. When did y'all decide on Mark Watson?
Still haven't decided.
Y'all put him in the pool. Y'all three have discussed it at some point.
This is an argument?
No, um, I want an answer. When did y'all discuss it? Because the other council members didn't know, and the mayor didn't know.
I've done my own due diligence, and I, I did.
And you did not include the other ones.
Karen.
Mary.
Do you, this is not appropriate, Mr. Mayor.
You're not.
She's asking questions, she's.
I'm asking questions, I want to know, you came in with an agenda.
Karen. Karen.
You came in with an agenda, you're pointing him as interim, and then you don't even give him.
Karen.
True.
Karen, that's not this topic right now, ma'am.
You gotta have a rule here, you know?
Karen.
You're out of order.
Karen.
Since I'm leaving.
Karen, please stop.
I'm late, it's the last time.
Well, you.
So, since Curtis Jones didn't show up, we just, we'll scratch that one.
Is that to you?
I don't think that's.
You know?
I mean, I don't.
I can't, I can't vote on this, so. Yeah, I feel like I've made my thoughts clear. I'd hope, hope the citizens would understand that I only wanted the best for my own situation, that's why I had worked like a cat for the past few weeks.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I mean, up to y'all, I can't make this decision.
I'll make a motion.
Otherwise I would have.
Make a motion to appoint Mark Watson as interim city manager, effective immediately.
Second.
My motion's second, I have to call for a vote.
Maymore, yes.
Welchess.
Martin, no.
Welchess.
Motion passes. No other announcements, I will, uh, call for a motion close. So, the motion's second.
Welchess.
Martin, yes.
Welchess.